All right, I will now call this meeting in order. 1.0 pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to 2.0 agenda approval. All in favor? All right, I'll come up to 3.0 community impact award. On a monthly basis, the board presents awards to students, staff, and members in the public recognition for outstanding, of outstanding achievement in academics and service to the district and the community. Tonight, we have two. And I will start with, the first one would be Nicole Edwards. And I'm gonna bear with me while I read this. As a driving force behind Gear Up, Nicole Edwards has worked tirelessly to ensure that students are prepared for success in post-secondary education. Whether that means pursuing a bachelor's degree, associate's degree, certificate, apprenticeship, or other training beyond high school, her leadership and passion for student success are unmatched. Last spring, Nicole organized and led a team of administrators, counselors, and support staff to the Gear Up conference, creating valuable learning opportunities for our district. Her efforts also include coordinating college and career activities for both students and their families, such as informational nights on topics like FAFSA and the Oregon Promise, as well as highly successful visit to the job course site at Town Point. Nicole was even honored by Oregon Senator Jeff Merkley with, with a flag at recent town hall meeting. Her exceptional work and unwavering commitment has played a crucial role in empowering students with the St. Helens School District in promoting college-going culture, a college-going culture. Her work with students is at the heart of her efforts. Nicole's impact is felt across our district from providing school supplies and hosting fun events to offering professional development. We are deeply appreciative of Nicole's outstanding contributions and the positive impact she has on our students in schools. Her dedication and hard work are truly commendable. Please join us in congratulating Nicole Edwards as the Staff Impact Award recipient for September. Oh, there's your, we always forgive to give that to people. And then for the Student Community Impact Award, this fellow is Peyton Malden. All right, Peyton Malden is a student leader and role model at the St. Helens High School. A multi-sport athlete, Peyton excels in R.C. volleyball, R.C. wrestling, and girls' flag football, demonstrating remarkable dedication, versatility, and versatility. Her athletic achievements earned her recognition as Booster Athlete of the Month last year, a testament to her hard work and commitment. Peyton's impact at St. Helens High School extends beyond athletics. She plays a pivotal role in the success of the yearbook programs, showcasing her leadership and creative vision. Her contributions to managing the social media platform for schools' athletic programs has significantly boosted engagement, reaching thousands of viewers. Peyton's skills and initiatives are not limited to school activities. She assists the St. Helens Booster Club with social media content, regularly taking photos at various athletic events, creating an athletic slideshow for the boosters' auction last March. Currently, Peyton is developing digital programs for sporting events, complete with team information and rosters, which can be accessed via QR code after the game. She's also working on slideshows for various school activities this year. Peyton's positivity, attention to detail, and infectious enthusiasm makes her a role model for her peers. She always encourages others to get involved, especially in wrestling and flag football, embodying the values of teamwork and school spirit that we strive here, strive for at St. Helens High School. Peyton's impact on our school and community is invaluable, and her contributions make her a shining example of student leadership. Please join us in congratulating Peyton as a Student Community Impact Award recipient. Okay. So that will bring us up to 4.0 visitors to address the board. This is a time for public comment on non-agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action, but will refer concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report to the board. We appreciate you keeping your comments to three minutes per individual, or five minutes if you're representing a group of patients. Please note, under Oregon revised status, personnel concerns will not be discussed in a public meeting. If you have concerns with the school district personnel, please schedule a meeting with the superintendent. At this time, do we have any public comments? We have one public comment. And we have Castel Rogers, did I pronounce your name right? No, oh, Castel Rogers, I am so sorry.
Hello, board members. My name is Cosette Rogers. I'm a junior at St. Helens High School. I'm here to speak to you about the ongoing issues regarding trust, student safety, and behavior of staff. When parents send their children to school, they entrust you with their children's safety and wellbeing. Unfortunately, many at the school have not experienced safety with staff. There are a lot of good teachers at St. Helens High School, so you're swaying their names and reputations by allowing this bad behavior to continue through just a few of your teachers who've worked with them. St. Helens High School motto that they teach is to be courageous, dedicated, and prepared. Have these actions represented by one or two staff members that you've allowed at the school represented this? Are you, are they preparing kids to be strong and independent, or are they being dumb and braided by standing up for what they need? Are you teaching them that the world can be good and just, or is that cruel and abusive? Should kids have, should kids have to show their courage every day by showing up to school, going to classes with staff that have wronged them and harmed them? Are students being prepared for success or failure? Are they being hurt? Students have the right to safety, the right to feel safe, the right to be safe. We should not be afraid at school, we should not be afraid in school. We should not be afraid of teachers. Recent events have broken this trust for many years. Few have not stood with the teachers in their time to meet many times. Students and families have a right to know if there are danger, physical, emotional, sexual danger. It does not matter if you want to protect old friends, students and families have the right to safety. One life ruined by ignorance, corruption, or whatever you want to call it, too many lives to be ruined. Secrecy is so deeply ingrained in the culture of this district, it's destructive. Good publicity is not more important than safety and trust. It should not be more important than very children to teach. Battles are that, that these are not current issues, that this is re-traumatization, and I promise you that these are very current issues, that many issues have been reported, one of which I know were at the teacher's mouth, put his hand in the student's mouth to stop her from talking. And it is not telepathic, or indeed. We cannot forget the pain and sorrow these individuals have caused, and the lives of minors have been hurt, and many have forgotten justice. A positive future for our school's needs to include acknowledging and apologizing to those wronged and betrayed. We cannot and should not sweep this back under the rug, and we've lived under it for many years. Well, in this week, we keep a few final questions I want you all to think about. How did this happen? How are you planning on fixing this? Why should we trust you in this district's policies? How will you rebuild this trust? Our community needs these answers, not excuses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I want to say thank you for coming up and speaking as a student. I know it takes courage to come up here and say that. Stop, I'm gonna ask you to look into that incident that she reported about, and I want a full, excuse me, ma'am, I'm speaking. I want a full detailed report on that immediately. It will be looked into. I'm gonna refer people to our policy, our district policy of filing complaints on staff. It's policy KL, it's on our website. If you have an issue and you feel it's not being addressed, look at the policy on KL and how to file grievances or complaints on staff members. It will be followed, I guarantee you, I will make sure of that. So, at this time, do we have any other public comments cards, or?
None received.
Okay. All right, that will move us on to 4.0 consent agenda. The board, on an individual basis, prior to the meeting, has reviewed all material. All financial reports are available for review by the public and business office. The board considers consent agenda items routine businesses and will enact the board in one motion. There'll be no discussion of these items at the time the board votes on the motion, unless members of the board or staff public request items to be discussed and removed from the consent agenda.
And is that we accept the consent agenda as stated?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? 5.0 new business.
Thanks for having us all up here together tonight. Shari Martin, the principal of Lewis and Clark Center, feeling well this evening. And Allison Dubuque, the principal of Bright Elementary. And to my right, Martine Garnett, principal of Columbia City Elementary. And then Dan Boylan, the director of River Valley. So we have some notes, and we're gonna start with a report from some things happening at Lewis and Clark. And yes, Shari asked us to share that, you know, they presented on their walk to read model that they were implementing in second grade, and now they're really pleased to announce that that's being implemented across to all grade levels.
The other thing that Shari and McBride and Columbia City are all working on right now, too, is a weekly intervention meeting that we call our MTSS, so Multi Tiered Systems of Response Meeting, that's occurring with our, like, support core team, so principal, deans of students, counselor, all of those folks that can help support student intervention. Along with each week, we're welcoming in a new grade level to come and talk about students and to help figure out what supports and, and things that they need. So this is a standing meeting, happens on Monday, and we rotate through grade-level teachers and teams to come to the table. And so we are in our second week of that work, and it's the same building in all three of our buildings. And so really proud of that. It's hard to kind of get people to talk really quickly about big things that are popping up with students, but we're really coming to consensus about what steps need to be taken to help support students' intervention. So that's been a really powerful move, I think, that we've all implemented this school year. That's been really exciting.
And it's part of that system and the way that we're collecting that data so that they can be really productive meetings based on data, as we make decisions of what additional support students might need, is our collaborative PLT cycle notes. And so the three principals were able to bring our three guiding coalitions, which are our leadership teams from the buildings, together for a meeting where we shared what that process is going to look like with our guiding coalitions. And then we're going to continue to do some meeting and planning together as all three elementaries and to train that core group of teachers to go back and then help our teachers at every grade level implement our PLT cycle notes, which will bring that data in a really concise way to those, yeah, TSS. It's really powerful.
We're very excited about that. It took a lot of planning at the end of last year, and then some training and laying foundation this summer. But I think it's gonna take off, and we're all gonna do great things. Shari did want me to mention to all of you, too, that at Lewis and Clark, they've been able to start their reading program, and one of the glows they've had is they're doing a walk-to-read model at each of their grade levels. I think Krista Fastiven was here last year, sharing with you some really powerful data. And across their building, they've been able to implement that at each grade level. And so she was really proud of that, and I wanted to make sure to mention that to you guys tonight.
Do you have anything else specific for Columbia City?
Columbia City is really excited to share that we had our first lodge today, which is a structure I told you about previously, where kids are grouped across grade level with all staff across the building. And so I have nine kids in my lodge, it was really fun today. We did the spider web of yarn to each other to show how we can connect with one another and sharing, to build that rapport with that group of students, and welcome our new kindergarteners and new students into those groups. And got to reflect on how we can work together as teammates, and how they can take that back to the classroom. So really positive and fun thing to share. And I think, and we have exciting things, too.
For early learning, in mid-August, we got the okay that we could start our new location for our preschool. So now we have a preschool in all three of our elementary schools. So we worked really hard to get that ready for the start of the year, and now it's a little over half-full. So every day, I'm having another tour for that school, getting it filled up as people discover we're there when they come to drop off their other siblings. It's really a neat experience being at Lewis and Clark because there is a head start there. And so now the bottom floor of Lewis and Clark is the kindergarten classrooms and the two preschool classrooms together. So we kind of have that floor to ourselves to kind of do activities together. And we're already planning activities with the head start preschool, so we can get those kids around each other. And so we'll be in kindergarten together next year.
And that was part of our strategic plan for the previous cycle. It's exciting to say we now have in the district preschool, and I feel a little bit passionate.
Any questions for us?
I'm wondering about the lodge, will it carry on, like, the same lodge group? Will it be the same next year and the following?
Yeah, so like, for my lodge, I inherited it from the previous principal. So some of those kids, and we talked about that today, have been together for, like, three years. Yeah, three years. And yeah, so it's really fun. We invited the new, we said goodbye to our fifth graders at the end of last year. And now, you know, fourth grader of last year is like, oh, now I'm the fifth grader of the group. It's really exciting. Yeah, and just really neat connection and community across the building. So whenever you see a lodge member in the building, you can do your secret handshake with them. We are orders forever, and so stars is an infinity sign. Yeah, it's really special.
Preschoolers cannot build a lodge yet because of the whole background registry and childcare. They have their own lodge, that's all of them. So they came up with their own handshake, and they do it all. Anytime someone comes in the school, last year when the high schoolers came over to do trainings, they got to teach all the high school kids how to do their secret handshake. And so it's really neat to try to get those preschoolers even ready for what they're gonna do.
I went last year, but I encourage you, whether you need to go, if you can, it's quite a phenomenal event.
You have a grand lodge, that's when. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let us know. We'll be there.
Thank you.
All right, hello, members.
Superintendent, board members. I'm Chris Williams, principal of the middle school. My school report for the St. Helens Middle School Riverhawks will start out with fall sports. The great news is the numbers that are turning out for our fall sports. We have 150 registered athletes, 60 from volleyball, 65 from football, and 25 from across the country. That's about 26% of our student population is currently involved in a fall sport. So if you look over there in the evenings, it's a pretty busy place for a middle school. So it's exciting to see that much community engagement and students there till 6:00, 7:00, 8:00 PM participating in athletics. I also want to highlight the college and career readiness activities that are taking place. We recognized a wonderful staff member in Nicole Edwards, and she has really brought a lot of college and career readiness opportunities to our students at the middle school. So in the past week, we're doing door decorating to bring awareness to careers and college opportunities. We had a military day, and then we're also beginning to deliver lessons for students around career readiness and college opportunities. So we're gonna see throughout the year a much larger influence of college and career readiness than seventh and eighth grade fellows in the middle school. And then the last piece, our back-to-school night is coming up, October 10th. And so I would love to see as many families that we have in the district, the middle school students joining us to support us. It's a great opportunity to visit classrooms, see the coursework and the curriculum that our students are being exposed to, and all the wonderful adoptions that have been taking place, and just get a feel for the middle school experience.
How about high school? I think we have a pitcher for high school.
Good evening, my name is Nicole Hilton. I'm one of the assistant principals at the high school. And we've got some great things happening. Today, all of the math teachers spent the day in a professional development, working with our instructional coaches, and really deepening our work on best practices and with a focus on student discourse. And another great thing happening is we're really looking at inclusive practices and working on eliminating barriers for our students to qualify for special education, and ensuring that all of those students have access to high-quality instruction, looking at those tier-one practices, and helping teachers deepen those practices to meet the needs so that the students don't need to leave the classroom and go elsewhere, that they can get their needs met in the classroom. An area that we're focusing on is attendance. We've been reaching out to students and families who are showing some concerning attendance, and we're setting up meetings and inviting families to come in and partner with us and try to figure out what the barriers are so that we can get kids to come into school, so.
Questions?
How about Mark, Mark come up and talk about the Virtual Academy? Sorry. All in different places. So, good evening, I'm Martin Heeman, principal of the Virtual Academy. Something's really gone well this year. Staff reported to me that this has been the smoothest start to the school year in the Virtual Academy's history. Current enrollment is above the level where we ended at the end of last school year. A lot of that is due to a lot of the hybrid partnerships that we have with the high school. Mr. Williams and I have worked really well last year where we have a full-time Virtual Academy student taking one class at the middle school, and now that's kind of gone reverse, where they've got a full-time student taking majority of their classes at the middle school and then taking a couple of classes of a lesson manager. So that's kind of a new partnership there. The homeschool option, we've added two new families, and we are now to 13 students participating in the program, which is double the number we had last year. We started out this year with our homeroom right from the get-go. Teachers are reporting that classes are being attended, but not at the level that we like. So teachers using their P.O.P. time to collectively talk about ways that they can kind of increase the student engagement and advance the homeroom to where we want to see it. And our elementary teacher is currently working with Lewis and Clark Elementary for their first student family engagement. They're gonna be making some ceramic, she's gonna have a ceramic activity. They're gonna fire the clay one night, and then the next night, they're gonna come back and blaze it and fire it again. So that's a great partnership that she's held with Lewis and Clark. Questions?
Would you have kids that are on your report? When you have that, we can have some more of those.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you're lazy. Glad to see some extra notes.
Good evening, thank you all for being here. My name is Matt Lacy, I am the senior high school principal at Plymouth, and I am really excited to be here in front of you, really very honored about that. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to present an update. I like numbers, and so I'll start with that, I think it gives a good overall snapshot. Currently, we're enrolled at 69 students. 14 of those are new this year. Two have already graduated this year, and it's one of the major points of our school, so that's already something to celebrate. We've got four teachers serving those, we've got a counselor, we've got a special ed coordinator there. We've got a college and career readiness coordinator there, who we've already heard, she's pretty amazing. We've got two instructional assistants and a spectacular head secretary. With these numbers, they reflect our commitment to providing personalized education in a relational setting to support all of our students. With our small class sizes and dedicated staff, we're able to offer individualized instruction to students to help them thrive in a really meaningful way. In academics, teachers are reporting a high level of engagement, and I'm impressed with the level of rigor that I'm seeing throughout our small school. I've already observed all of our teachers at least three times, given some meaningful feedback, and we've had ways to have informal conversations about those to go over it. And they're often running to a really neat start. On the other side of that, we've already had our circle-up time, having all 69 students circling in one space in that common area that you see over there is something really special. But there's, and with those numbers come relationships that's really need to see built. And let's see, in those, in those times, that was our time to kick off the war, where we have science perseverance, ownership, work ethic, and respect. It was neat to see our students all in one place, and we really get to form a community. This leads directly into our twice-a-week win time, where we cover these topics in greater detail, applying them into all levels of areas to succeed academically and in our community. In the college and career readiness, Gear Up has been a driving force in our school, thanks to the efforts of Nicole Edwards. We are in the thick of our Gear Up Spirit Week, and our small school is a big deal. And we've had a lot of different community members come in, and it's been a lot of fun to see. And Go Panthers, we are the Panthers, and we are solidifying our mascot and what that looks like. It's really professional. Stacy's done a really good job in helping us refine that. And so next time, our next board meeting, you're gonna be able to see some pretty neat branding going on, and that's gonna be disseminated in pretty creative ways. I'm excited about how that's gonna go. Currently and throughout the school year, we are really tackling attendance, I mean regularly, with our student support specialist, with our counselor, and with our head secretary, where we talk about each one of our struggling kids, where we identify them by both attendance and by their academic success. And we talk very individually about those meetings. We've already had meetings with parents, we've had three successful sessions of home visits where we go and knock on doors, because if we are, we care. We're looking for ways that we can support, and we've got resources to be able to do it. I am privileged and honored to be working here. Thank you for your time and presence here this evening. I want to extend an invitation to each one of you to come on out, join us anytime you would like to for lunch, and just sit at the bar, it's a really neat place. Any questions?
No, keep up the good work.
Welcome, thank you.
Hey, that brings us to 5.2 superintendent report.
So, Mrs. Smith asked about enrollment. I just received the enrollment in between our leadership meeting and our executive meeting. So I don't have the number, I'll share that, I'll email that to you, and we'll share it the next work session. Part of the challenge is we, and this is a good thing, as a board, there's a desire to have multiple options for kids. We have about 250 students in our Virtual Academy, and roughly 150 are co-enroll. And so she has to go through and pull that apart to get us some good.
High school students are early for it.
So we'll get that to you. The next thing I want to mention, it's not on here, but we're very happy that we have a tentative agreement with our classified team. So I think we've worked out a really good deal for everyone supporting our staff. That's a good thing. The next piece is continuing our conversation about cell phones.
Your timing is right.
I think that was playing a nice game.
Yeah, it was. It was my new year to say that.
Yeah, that's, you just reminded me, sorry.
I've done it more times than you can, you have to don't worry.
On enrollment, when she breaks her heart to die. Can we also know about clubs and athletics, does any of them hurt her? Just since she's still living around.
Yeah, I can get some.
Now cell phones.
Now cell phones. So, a couple things, the last meeting, you know, we were. So, a couple things, the last meeting, you know, we reviewed the documents, the articles that were shared, and then we talked about what exactly are our policies? So I pulled those out, and then I redrafted some questions that you'd asked me to add to the survey. So the first thing, I want you to take a look at policy J F C D B, personal electronic devices and social media. That first paragraph, I think, really outlines exactly what our policy is. Students may be allowed to use and possess personal electronic devices on district property and in district sponsored activities provided such devices, and here's the key, are not used in any manner that may disrupt the learning environment. So I think that's kind of the key, and I think what everybody is concerned about, speaking ports. So with that policy is the administrative rule, how to apply the policy. That's the next document that you have. It talks about how students may, and then, number one, students may use and possess personal communication devices, excuse me, on district grounds, subject to the phone. Personal electronic devices shall not be used in a manner that disrupts the education process. It's like what we read. If you skip down to number five, the use of personal electronic devices in any way to send or receive messages, data, or information that would pose a threat to academic integrity, contribute to constitute academic dishonesty is strictly prohibited. That's something that we all definitely agree with. And then, number seven, students shall comply with any additional school rules as established by the principal and classroom rules as approved by the principal concerning the appropriate use of personal electronic devices. So we have, I think, strong enough school district policy, but that brings us down to the survey. What type of school policy should we set as far as our expectations? So before we talk about the questions, there was a three-minute NPR short listen that I think might be good for us to hear. It kind of gives a perspective on the issue, so.
High school students have thoughts about bans against cell phones at schools.
I feel like it's not really fair for the most part.
I don't personally think it's, I don't think it should be a law, but I think it's also beneficial. So even if I don't want to accept that it's good for us, I think it is good for us.
That was freshman Adriana Lowe and junior Cory White, high school students in the Indianapolis area. They recently started the school year under a new state law that restricts cell phones in schools, and they're not alone. At least seven states have passed similar laws or policies in the last couple of years. So, how is that playing out in the classroom? Well, Lee Gaines of the member station W F Y I visited two Indiana high schools to find out.
Okay, guys. That's the bell.
It's a couple weeks into a brand-new school year at Lawrence North High School in Indianapolis. Math teacher Jenny Gimmott is eager to start her Algebra I class, but first.
All phones at home, air pods, tablets, not going back. Keep them up, please.
That's because a new Indiana state law now restricts the use of phones and other devices in schools. Last call, nearly three-quarters of U.S. high school teachers said cell phones were a major problem in classrooms. That's according to a study by Pew Research Center.
Guys, moving up, inverse operations.
In response to this problem, a handful of states have passed laws or enacted policies that aim to restrict the use of cell phones in schools. According to an Education Week analysis, six of these measures take effect this school year, including Indiana's.
I'm overall very happy about it.
That's teacher Jenny Gimmott again.
It makes my job easier to know that the law is behind me. You know, that basically now I have something to support my message.
Prior to this year, it was up to each teacher at Lawrence North to decide if or how students could use their devices. Now, under the law, unless a student needs it for a medical reason or a disability, they can't be on their phone during class. Lawrence North senior Taylor Smith says it's changed the way he uses his phone in school.
I wouldn't say that I needed, like, somebody else to tell me to get off my phone, but I will say that it's going to help me a great deal to have that thought in the back of my mind saying, wait, this is illegal.
It's up to schools to come up with their own discipline procedures. At Lawrence North, students who have their phones out during class can get a referral, basically a note in their school records. They may also have to hand their phone over to a teacher for the rest of class. That's also true for students caught using their cell phones at Beach Grove High School, about a 20-minute drive south of Lawrence North. Beach Grove sophomore Jayden Howard says he used to secretly be on his phone during class.
And last year, I had a whole bunch of missing assignments.
Now, he wouldn't risk it.
And this year, I feel like I'm paying attention more, more focused.
But not all students agree the law has helped them.
Like, last year, there was not a point in my day where I did not have a headphone and listening to something, and now I can't listen to anything.
Grace Wingfield is a senior at Beach Grove. She says music helped her stay focused during quiet work time at school, and without it, she says she's struggling to concentrate.
I think that's probably the hardest part for me of this whole phone world, just not having music.
This is something I've heard from a lot of students. Martin Barker, an instructional coach at Beach Grove, says headphones are a mixed bag.
Some students, that absolutely locks them in if they're really distracted by the classroom, but I have other students that, like, absolutely, music just completely distracts them, and they can't throw some of their stuff away.
Barker thinks this law will benefit more than it will hurt, and he's already seeing students more focused on their schoolwork this year. His colleague, Beach Grove English teacher Josie DeFries, says she's noticed another benefit.
I feel like my classrooms are loud again.
Last year, DeFries says when students had downtime, their heads were buried in their phones, and it was quiet. This year, that's changed.
The kids turn to each other and talk, or they start going on my board, or they ask me for questions with their homework, and it just becomes a lot more lively, interactive environment.
She hopes it stays that way. For NPR News, I'm Lee Gaines in Indianapolis.
So, a lot of stuff that we'd probably hear from our students. What we will do is go out and have listening sessions with our students, do what they have to say at the high school in Plymouth. We'll also be presenting a survey, and so if, I think you're familiar with the original questions, but if you turn the page and look in blue, 10 and 11 are the additions that I tried to capture what you guys asked for the last work session. So, number 10, in your opinion, how effective are existing school policies regarding cell phones being enforced? Very effective, somewhat effective, neutral, somewhat ineffective, very ineffective. And then, at number 11, what type of cellphone policy would you be most supportive? No restrictions on cell phones, cell phones should be allowed during non-instruction times. Cell phones should not be used anytime during school day, neutral, no. And so, just kind of as a reminder, we're going down this track to really get an understanding of what's best for our students.
It's just more for the high school kids, because it seems like this thing is secondary.
Yeah. I mean, that middle school seems to have things, kind of, stabilized as well. Yeah. Not elementary, but.
But, yeah, but this survey would have a different feedback than the high school would, from the middle school.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what we want.
We're sending this out to elementary, middle school, and high school parents, correct?
Yes.
All district parents.
All district parents, community stakeholders, teachers.
Are we including, because I know if you're a parent of a student in the school, we could get a copy of the handbook that would essentially outline how we would follow these policies here, how each school has those. Are we including a copy of that excerpt to provide them with? So people get the copy, they never read it, they don't understand it, but this would really help to. Just whatever simplifies things to say, this is what we're focusing on, this is what's currently happening. Is this what you think, or? Because that would help to narrow some of that.
I'll see if we include documents, if not, we'll include those soon, because that may make it pretty cumbersome.
So just as a thought, that for parents, they should be able to, we just sent this out, and it's electronically, that they should be able to fill one out for each student category that they have, because they may have a student in the high school and the elementary school that have very different feelings about those two things. So, they should, there's nothing wrong with them filling out three forms, one for each kid, for whatever they have. I'd like to know what their feelings at each level, yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying anything here, but a way then that we can ask them, like, even additional, what age level is this child that you were referring to when you're answering this?
I don't think I've seen anything that way.
Maybe at least some at the very end.
I thought there was something, there was a security.
You're going to have IT and that is added, but it can be.
The elementary, middle.
Well, we have, we have folks self-select students.
Yeah.
But we don't have.
Can we add, like, elementary, middle, high school?
I think you have a very different set of answers for each of those.
Sure.
I'm not sure about the last two questions, in a way of, we already know the answer. Like, when I looked on the list, five of them are not being followed in general, two of them are maybe. So, there's only two to three out of nine that we're actually compliant with in general. So I don't know why we would ask them if they're effective when they're not effective. So maybe more like, what are your feelings, or what's your opinion, or how collaborative will you be with a new policy?
Happy to change that up.
I would, because then we know who we are buying it, because I know I have strong personal feelings about what I will allow and not allow with my own child.
Okay, so, do you really want me to cross that one off and then add, how would you, would you be willing to enforce policy?
I think that's why I wanted those components that each of the schools provides, because it already provides very clear instructions about what should be happening inside of each of the buildings. And for parents, maybe they didn't identify it, maybe they didn't, there's a lot of stuff in there sometimes. But ultimately, is that something they would agree to adhere to if it was being followed based on what?
When you ask.
I've read through that, it's very clear on how it's essentially supposed to be backed by now.
Can you say, how effective are the policies being enforced? That the parent, you might want to state, this is our policy, or have that, if it's online, you know, they can look. Say, our current policy says this, how well is that being enforced, in your opinion? So they know what we're talking about.
Yeah, but it should just be the little excerpt, so it's not so much information that it does.
Yeah, we absolutely.
Yeah, but our, like, our, it says that no student's going to get on social media at school. That's happening. They're not going to take pictures. That's happening. Like, you know, so, we already know the answer.
But if you look at the student handbook, the things the students would be reviewing, and that's what they're supposed to be following, it reads differently than, so there's the overall policy that the district sets forth and says this, and then each building is going to come up with their set of expectations.
And then each teacher comes up with their own expectation.
It shouldn't be.
Yeah, it's completely different all over the board right now.
And that's why we want this survey to find out. Right, and that's part of the A R, is that.
I just don't think, the question's not useful when we know that it's not being, it's not effective.
So the other thing, Kelly, that I would say. Okay, in conversations with my own students this year.
I'm not so willing to collaborate and be a partner in that.
Different than it was last year. There has already been a conversation of the importance of perceptual things. So I do think it is important to bring that to bear. We know that not everything is consistent during the chaos, but from what I have received at this point, there is more adherence to this set of components than in prior years is.
Your child's classroom.
We had an observation, but my child takes.
I haven't even seen the handbooks this year for any of my children.
Okay, so are you willing to partner and collaborate with the updated school laws? How about the other one?
Number 12, can you say that, put your answer on the back? Because that's not grammar check.
This isn't the document that's going to be sent out.
Right, okay.
It'll be a.
Allow work, okay, that's all I'm.
So, like, question number six, I'm not sure I follow what it's asking. Cell phones should be fully allowed, cell phones should be partially restricted, and cell phones should not be allowed. Like, what is the definition of restricted or fully allowed? I mean, to a certain extent, it's either accessible and usable, or, like, we can't.
Right, it's open, I'm happy to adjust any of the questions.
Yeah, no, I'm just, like, trying to say, if I were to answer that, I'd be like.
So, like, out and about, at your desk, open, partially restricted, maybe in your backpack until you're told that you can use it. Not allowed, probably not on your person.
Well, if you read the hand, it's saying that non-instructional times, it's only referring to that.
So for personal use, not instructional use. That would help to clarify for me, you know, am I using this for my own personal social media scrolling, or, you know, whatever? Or am I using this for instructional assistance?
And do we find any value in using that for instructional?
So you talked about number six.
Yeah.
Okay. During non-instructional times, during lunch, passing periods. So, do you want me to, do you want that expanded, do you want it crossed off? How do you want that adjusted?
I think if we could just adjust it to, like, you know, passing periods, whatever the case is, are you using it for school-related purposes or non-school-related purposes?
Okay.
Which gets into content things that I have other potential concerns about, but ultimately, that I think would at least clarify.
I wonder if it's a, that may be a different question. Because I think the assumption is that if it's during non-instructional times, it's not, not for. Can you help me understand what partially restricted would be? What partially restricted would mean? Perhaps that students can use it during lunch or passing period only to call the parents to have a cup, maybe only during emergency. Maybe it means they can use it during lunch, not during passing period. I think there's a variety of things to look at. Okay. That would be my first take on it. So I generated these questions from other surveys that other districts have used. And I'm totally open to changing these however we want to get them. I just want to drill it down so we can get it.
Yeah.
Get it out, so.
I also have to call someone, functional understanding.
Other, because this is good, this is what we need to do, so are there other lots of questions? So we can fine-tune tool, and it's not going to be perfect, but it's going to give us an idea to help inform.
Number two. I would almost repeat that question for cell phone use for instructional time. So how do you feel about them using them during instructional time? I'm assuming it could be a distraction, but what about, what are your feelings about using them for the purpose of instructional time?
So if I take number three.
Number four, I was looking at number two.
Do you think cell phones are beneficial to student learning as a possible? Would that cover that piece?
I'm meaning more like if you're using it for instructional, because there's still benefits to using one if you're being taught how to use it appropriately.
How do you feel about you using it in, like, a. Students using their phones.
Is that number three?
Or just for learning, or strange? But for learning, it's like a, maybe it's, maybe you're using it to do your online banking, or maybe you're mapping something, or maybe you are looking up and using A I, which most of the time you can do stuff on your.
Financial literacy in today's world is.
You just said kind of a key thing, but in the next three or four years, the new versions of all the software are going to be there, and A I is going to be a large part of people's lives, like it or not, in one way or the other. And so, we really do need to stay a little bit ahead of the game, because it's really coming now, they're saying, oh, this, this new model X Y Z has A I special chips in it that are going to be way faster and cause way more trouble. So, it's, it's here, and it's, it's going to be growing very, very rapidly in the next few years, so. So.
Do you have any thoughts?
What we're doing tonight might be different than next year.
I'm wondering, because I know we talked about instructional time and lots of the times it'll be like work time in class. And I know the last year when there was a strong cell phone rule, that students would use their phone for like personal things during work time at the end of class. Would that fall into like the non-instructional time or the instructional time question?
I would think that would be non-instructional, would want to call that out specifically.
Yeah, maybe like for personal use, like in the classroom.
So just, just to date myself, but somewhere between 40 and 50 years ago, I wrote a paper on the use of headphones for the A D H D student, letting them listen to music. And being A D D myself and somewhat H D, I, I found that was quite interesting. Then, and I don't see that now somebody has just said, hey, I function better when I listen to music when I'm working. Other folks want it quiet. If I'm working in the shop and I'm really trying to get something figured out, I go turn it off because I just can't, can't have that distraction. So playing the radio in the classroom is great in the lab, but it's not great when kids are trying to do their math because some kids are distracted and some kids are benefiting. And if they have their AirPods in, they might. So I, I, I hate to be the devil's advocate when you're really trying to get rid of this stuff. But if we have a defined kid or one that's actually been identified, maybe we use a headstead instead of AirPods so they're not saying yada, yada, you know, you're letting them. But, and I did have some students that did that. And one of them shared, hey, listen, this is classical music. This is, and that kid was a four-point student. So, but he said, I just don't function well without this. So, and that prompted me to write that paper for some class, I'm sure. And I don't think that that science has changed any. I think our brains are still just as messed up as they ever were when it comes to some people trying to focus and some people do it different ways.
I think you're right. Do you have any?
I don't think I can.
Keely, just sure. So instructional and non-instructional, so it's kind of defined in here as non-instructional is passing periods. And instructional, thereby would be class time. But for your component, you're saying that non-instructional is included inside of class time because there's dead time, there's time there. Students are not completed with their work and they're doing other things, right?
Yeah, thinking like maybe five minutes before the bell when nothing else can be taught. Or it's just like the end of work time when kids are kind of packing up already. That's what I feel like it was the most.
Right.
That's different at the high school than the middle school. I will assure you. Because you let the worm out of the bag there and he's going to be crawling.
There may be, the intent isn't the ban. It's to figure out what's the best policy for our schools. That's what we're going to do after. I appreciate bringing that up because I also think of math students that I've had who would get them with a math assignment much quicker than everybody else. They had 25 minutes left in class. That's kind of, can they then, if they got to work them, use it on social media? Okay, I get it. Thank you. And Keely, from your perspective, in those moments, do you see more student interaction inside of a classroom when students are on their phones and communicating and socializing? Or are they doing less inside of those classrooms?
Well, I feel like, I kind of think it depends on what class you're in. Because I feel like depending on where you're sitting and if you have a group of people around you that's social, I feel like it'll fall more into the social category. But then if you're in a class where it's like quieter and the mood's just not really as talkative, then it'll be more just like, you know, you're working on your own stuff. Or I feel like that's where people will go on their phone. Because I feel like even if you have your like cell phone device accessible, if you're sitting with a group of people that you're familiar with, they'll usually chat with them anyways.
All right. That would get to your vision. Bring it back to you again. Does this seem taken care of? That's all I've got for now.
Do you want to send it on and get it out to students?
I, I think, yeah, I can send it to you online. You guys take a look at it and then if the work session will give it a thumbs up. I'll try to put it maybe in an electronic version so it's ready to go. Maybe Google Lock, probably push it out with the attached documents. I'll see if we can get attached documents that will like solve it. So. At a minimum, you can add the language in just a little thing. I think there's. Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Can I bring that bookmarking in? This is reminding me of it, that we don't have it on our agenda or anything. But at the very top, I was talking about that this is going to go to students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members. We, probably most of us know that very last chronicle went out today and there'd be no more newspapers to community members. And unless we can get every community member to become on our parent view or to even know to go anywhere on our website, there's not going to be that kind of community members involvement. And maybe it's not just in this, but even on other, you know, things that are happening in our school district. I think, I, I kept, I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion, then everybody can go from there. But I was thinking what would be so great is if we actually had a group of our kids at the high school that that is exactly what they do, is something that can get out to the community on a regular basis of things that they're doing. I know that our, of course, Stacy runs her brains out trying to go from place to place and getting some pictures, but there's no way she can be at all. And it's, you know, and now she doesn't even have anybody to send those to be in a newspaper for.
It's like a great partnership with the city, with their water bill. We can send you that.
There we go.
Okay?
Come up with brainstorm ideas, but somehow to get things out again to communities and to all of the newspapers.
Stacy has a good network and a good lister of active community partners that we have that we would push that out to law enforcement to face. Just, is, I just realized this. So for posting meetings and all of these other things because of the lack of news sources, are we just putting them then on our website and then essentially popping in? But, so it's a physical posting and then that, but that's basically where we're now legally required, right? So we can't point to like, if the government says the posting was noticed or, right? We can't, I believe we can, they have to. Anything available is what I'm saying. Because if it was lost, the spotlight is still available.
Yeah.
I've heard that word, so I wasn't sure.
All right. So that brings us out to 6.0, visitors to address the board. This is time for public comment on agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action, but refer concerns to superintendent and ask a report to the board. Appreciate keeping your comments to three minutes per individual, five minutes if you have any or representing a group of patrons. Please note under Oregon revised status, personnel concerns will not be discussed in a public meeting. If you have any concerns, to school district personnel, please schedule a meeting with the superintendent. Do we have any?
We're.
Okay.
If anybody has a cell phone comment or anything, you could totally fill it out and talk to us right now.
Oh, it's just a moment.
Go fill it out.
Oh, nevermind.
8.0.
All right, 8.0, upcoming meeting input. October 3rd, 2024 is the board A S C D Zoom meeting from 5:00 to 6:15 P M. October 9th is the board work session, 6:30 P M.
Sure. Kristi, are we just going to get a Zoom link and do that at home then?
Yes.
That's just total virtual meeting?
Okay. Can I bring up something? So it goes, just makes the changes that it looks like we skipped over 7.0. So going from six is maybe eight becomes seven and nine becomes eight.
It just wasn't one, it's a virtual seven.
Yeah.
It's just a virtual, it's not there. But for somebody reading this later, you know.
Are you making, are you making the agenda right now?
No, we're not. There's just no seven.
There's no seven tonight. 9.0 adjourned. Okay, that is the meeting.
I heard it, 7, 8, 9.
Okay, go ahead.